But you didn't get a chance to find out what it was?
No, he was gonna do a little more research, but then he decided to go.
Are you still in pain?
No.
Are you still in pain?
No, not too bad. No, just looks like I'm asleep.
When did you have your surgery?
Uh...
Eight two weeks tomorrow.
Oh wow. Yeah. On the 25th of February. It's on June. It's just hard to sleep.
You still have another plan?
Actually, the last couple nights, I went in there and slept in the, um, sleeping bed that Jackson sleeps in. But I usually take a couple of last little nights before I go in there. And I'll sleep a little bit in there, but then I have to get up and go to the other side. But at least I'm sleeping a little bit in the bed.
I see the bread didn't tell you that.
Hmm? Oh no, it didn't. It was good. It was very good.
I was letting her know about that noise I heard down there. So there's just nothing... On the top of the soft, it sounded like a blubber. It was a quiet night that night.
I'm like, yeah. I've got the panel off on this side. I might put that one on, big one off on the other side. And shoot, there was noise.
It wasn't a big deal. It was just a grinding noise. It sounded like the mines. But that's the way, my compressive sounds better too.
Yeah. The other one, I just started doing that. It's not good on the floor. The other one was a bit... Disgusted. It's not, it might be not. This building, microphone stuff, there's always all sorts. You had heard of that.
Drain house heater, above or down somewhere.
But I wasn't going to the other ones. Understand what I'm saying? The noise was now off that little building. Or this one, a little bit this way, and the noise being right across.
Now, I've got stuff started with the house.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just bigger than what it is.
Go from the grower lights, like, straight up to the sun.
I need to make sure.
Because grower lights are not as strong as the sun, so...
What does it take to start with the technology?
So I'm putting a hood on the house and then watching the temperature.
Yeah, sure. The dome coming in there. I'll put that in.
They're looking really nice.
I hear his name on the handle. I'm gonna look at it.
You have to do that for him once a year, or?
Yeah.
Hey, how's it going?
I speak.
I gotta sit close. I can't hear him back. I can't hear him.
Well, yeah, well, I didn't.
Yeah, we're gonna go ahead and just call each other. So which government will call?
Kelly Potter here.
Linda, present.
Oh, Linda present. Then, uh, I got something, I got a... I was hoping a lot more people would show up. But I explained to everybody, it's, uh, the different seating and some different others that's actually happening in the town. Thank you. Anyway, it's, uh, I want to first ask everybody to hold it. It's, uh, any remarks or anything you've got to say until I have to be able to floor it up to the public. So, and I promise after that, you know, if you have any questions, we're in the room. So... Then, uh... I wanted to also, it's, uh, I want to apologize for my lack of, uh, knowing how to do this yet, but here it comes. Like, just like I did with our last president. It's, uh, overtime. So... So meetings will get better as it goes on. And right here too, it's, uh... We're all here working together to make the town better, not to tear it down. I feel that I'm lean, I'm honest, and straightforward, and willing to help anybody. If I have a point to make, I address it right up front. Pretty straightforward. So I would expect people to do the same to me and our board members. So, the worst of the worst needs to be addressed immediately. We have the same situation involving the same people. It's happening repeatedly. So these, these needs to be finalized so we can move on to new business instead of carrying on from the old year. And just so the public knows, I wanted to explain the new seating of the town council. Sorry, I got a cold too. I've had for weeks. It's, uh, I wasn't taking, I'm not, we're not taking anything, we're working for Kelly Potter's to do the awesome job. It's just my way of thinking is, I think all three board members ought to have a, uh, a term on the, on each seat. Throughout their four-year term, and that's, that's the purpose of those changes. The, the way I think anyway. And the, the Pino Town Board is equal. There is not one person sitting on any of these seats who's got more power than the other. So it's supposed to be a three-person team to work together for the benefit of the town. Now, before we get started to the official town meeting, I need to address a serious situation that transpired after our last meeting. That would not be tolerated whatsoever in any way, shape, or form. John Potter, a member of our town council, a member of our town that the town council reported, appointed to be representative, or to be a representative for our town for the position of the APC. Took it upon himself to video record our February meeting, and then it got downloaded on YouTube. This alone is not the issue. Thanks for putting that on, I mean, that was good. The actual video. This alone is not the issue. The issue is that there was an edited clip and a distorted version of the video sent around our community by a board member. Leading people to believe Linda Ogle, our vice president, and myself. Okay, it's Linda Ogle, our vice president, our town council, always has her hands on me saying that this happened repeatedly. And that Linda and I both is unprofessional and was accused of inappropriate behavior. People was also urged to contact the state board and report Linda and myself. And those people also encouraged and urged to go after me for the two people I was talking about at our last town meeting. After some investigation, it was clear to understand that this is just a smear campaign from our last president, Kelly Potter.
And you better get the chance to address what you're saying.
Well, you get your chance. So... To discredit myself and Linda for the simple fact that she got voted off the president and I got voted on. I thought it was what I get, all of us.
And there was no discussion about it. It was, "I nominate, Paul, I nominate." Which, there should have been at least some discussion, so you two had decided this before.
We, we, we brought that up in the January meeting, that we were...
No, men and women don't talk. Anyway, this is unprofessional and childlike behavior that will not be tolerated like stated before. I would like to see our town board member start working together as a team instead of trying to tear each other apart for the benefit of the town. And also says, "If this cannot, if we cannot accomplish this, we will, we will pursue other avenues to stop lies and discontent." That's one of our boards.
Okay. I have every right to talk, and it's no different than what Linda does in her shop. It's no different. The only difference was, I put my opinion in writing, and I'm not backpedaling on what I said. It was... I did say, yes, it was inappropriate, and I looked over, and Linda was guiding you through the meeting, right? Something was written down, held over for you to look at, which why couldn't it be said out loud? And her head was on her shoulder.
I have never had my head on her shoulder.
Watch the video.
I watched it.
We'll watch it.
I was like this, and I did touch his arm, but I have never, ever...
We'll watch it. Straight down, position is camera.
And I have never touched his leg.
On the real footage, I'll send you the footage, but on the real, on the real film, I wouldn't like that at all.
There was no edited clip. What was sent was from start to finish. All three parts were uploaded and then put into one, so you can watch all three parts. So what you're accusing me of is not true.
It's all true. It's one hundred percent true. I have proved everything. Anyway, much less than one.
No, I get a chance to speak. What part can you prove?
When we open the floor, you get a chance to speak.
No, I'm a board member, and you're accusing me of doing things. You can't stop me from having an opinion anymore than...
You sent the videos. You sent, not, you sent clips, I should say, or something. I don't know who sent it.
I did not clip it. The only one I sent it to was Nicole Leighton's.
I don't know who it was.
The link. I sent the link. I never once sent a clip of anything. I sent the link, and I explained. Because you went from the December meeting saying, "I have done a good job."
You did do a good job.
And then you flipped totally, and there was no discussion about it, so then, okay, what did I do wrong?
It's a three-board, it's a three-person team. We can't discuss it except at the meetings.
And there was no discussion at the meeting, so it looked like it was pretty much planned. Because there was no discussion. It was, "I nominate, I nominate," and there was no discussion. And now I'm going to me.
Why they don't have to be a discussion? What was the discussion?
Well, it's for us to be working together, but this attack on me is wrong because I have the right to have an opinion about what's going on.
You do, you do.
And you have said things that I don't think you would put into writing. And I have been dragged through the mud since, for a year now.
Not by others.
Yes, I've walked on eggshells, not to make anybody mad. And this is, you're accusing me of state board of accounts. I, I'll show you what I wrote. I said nothing ever about the state board of accounts. And they have nothing to do with council anything.
I know.
So how that...
All it said is, uh, to the state, that's all it said.
No, and so I don't know who ran with that. But, uh, uh, exactly, that calling people trashy, calling residents trashy, inappropriate, unprofessional.
Bunch of truths. You're right, bunch of truths.
But it is, I've listened to discrimination. I've listened to racism over the past year that comes up at meetings.
Racism?
And we need to do better.
We definitely need to do better.
Yeah, I mean, when, yeah, well, when residents are being described as that Mexican.
It's gotta, it's gotta be doing better.
Yeah, yeah, when they're described as that Mexican, or when apostolics are called by the name that's not so flattering. That happened at a meeting where they were called crowds. So we need to do better because we're recording.
Yeah, I was talking to him.
No, I was talking about a business.
Who was this?
Some business that did sewer work. They were referred to, yeah, they're, they're crowds, they're crowds.
Okay.
So don't attack on me, because you should be having the same conversation with things that are said. How is it different?
I'm having a conversation with the whole town, everybody's here.
And how is it different when I finally speak out, because I have nothing left to lose? I am being talked about.
You didn't lose nothing. You're still on the board. You're still on.
Yeah, my point being, I busted my butt for the year, met with constant criticism. The sewer account would be in a lot worse shape. And what it felt like to me was that it's games being played, and there was no discussion over who was going to be president or vice president. You two...
I don't see, nobody even said one. And I don't like it. Because it was untrue.
What was that?
And making people think that Linda and me's got something going on, or her hands on me, or hanging on me all the time.
I said it was inappropriate behavior.
That's, that's just ridiculous.
And I didn't say that, so people can make their own conclusions too. I didn't have to tell them.
Okay, yep, you're right.
I know I...
All I know is, we gotta, like I said, we gotta get better.
I don't want me to do that, but I never laid my head on his shoulder, and I never touched his leg. I didn't do that.
That's why I wanted to get it out in the room, get it done. So you didn't stew, I didn't stew.
And I have the right to speak.
You do.
It is my right, and you do not have the right to sit there and tell me that I cannot. Or that you're gonna take action against me. Or you're gonna take action against me. You said you read in that, that action would be taken.
If it didn't stop, not...
But I'm allowed to speak, and I can say what I want.
Okay.
I have the right.
Okay, you do, you do.
Well, just speak the truth then.
And I did it. And, well, I could sit there and say, "I didn't say that. I didn't do that." I, I'm open. I did send, I did forward the video. I did not clip it. If there was any clip, that was somebody else, not me, because I don't have that technology to clip a video. I don't know how to do that. I said nothing about the state board of accounts. And I know what I did say, that what I just admitted to, I don't have. But I have the right to speak out, just as you should do. I haven't in the past, but I can, and I am.
Well, so are we. Believe me, so are we. Okay.
And I've done nothing wrong.
Okay. Alright, so now...
We even now?
Why does that have to be even?
If you haven't done anything wrong, I certainly haven't done anything wrong.
I spoke and gave my opinion. How is that wrong? You speak and give your opinion.
No, I said it was wrong.
Well, I just was told that I, I'm wrong, so...
Wrong.
No, I said if you were right, I was right.
No, you said wrong.
Anyway, it's, uh, alright, so now let's, uh, move on to the proof of February minutes. I looked through it, and I didn't see any descriptions. He all, nothing like that, or maybe one of the girls did.
The only thing I'm seeing is we need to, when the meeting is adjourned and a motion is made, we actually need to vote to adjourn, not just a motion.
Good, yeah, I agree. Do we take a vote on the approval of the last January minutes?
I make a motion.
Or here, February minutes, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the February minutes.
She said, I throw it up right there. Ready?
Aye, second to the red. Yeah, I'll second it, Kelly's second. And then the vote.
Yep, and then the vote.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, let's move on to old minutes. So we're moving on to the old, old business right now, to the correction of January minutes, which you did.
Right, Linda had a question about, um, Adam. She thought she heard me say, "A hundred dollars you charge," and I said, "It's three hundred." And I went back and listened to the tape, and I did say, "Three hundred." So...
Okay. Alright, so we just now, you just approved it, we just went through that right there, right?
Right, we, because we did approve this last time. She just questioned about that one.
So we're approved again, so we don't need to approve this again, right?
That's correct. I just wanted to make that correction.
Okay, the video recordings is actually on old minutes. So I haven't called anybody as of yet. So, again, busy as sipping the dog the last three weeks. But I, I do got some, I do got a couple names down, and we got time. So I'll make sure I call them this coming week.
Somebody next meeting.
Yeah, oh yeah. Okay, the ordinance establishes the sewer regulations. Our kind of, so we got a couple papers. Kind of, just kind of briefly go over some of it, on what we're gonna be doing. So, what we got, it's, uh, ordinance number 2025 dash two.
Oh, that's, that's the rate hike.
Yeah.
That's the difference.
I know, I'm gonna read this, and I'm gonna read this here also.
Okay, the delta, that's down. The rate hike, new business.
Well, this here, this here, the new, okay, notices notices the public of the hearing.
Right, that's all, right here, the rate hike. That's section C. We're ready for, uh, ordinance establishing.
That's one.
No, that's the rate hike.
Well, that's what I got.
Ordinance 2025 dash two, and I gave you all page eight, page eight, I believe, because Kelly had seen, no, that's the rate hike two.
Well, you said ordinance number 2025.
Yeah, that's what I got.
That's, that was two. This was dash one. This is the one that Kelly, on page, I think it was eight, last time, she had noted some mistakes. And so I talked to the attorney, and he made the three corrections that she wanted. And, um, I saw you get each of you page eight with the corrections.
It's not, I don't have it.
But he did leave out the part that you told me about, that where it would be at our discretion.
Right, and he changed that a little bit, because he said it would be, it wouldn't all naturally happen, isn't it, the council decided it. And then they also, um, changed that to Wells County, and then took out the part about, um... Both parties are responsible for paying for a pump. If, um, like, let's say you have a pump, and two parties share that pump, then if there was something down there, that you would split that between two, the two people. And Kelly pointed out, that is not fair, and so I had him change that as well. So what we need to do here is on this ordinance, this is the ordinance that talks about...
I do not have that.
Yeah, you do. Everybody got it.
I'm just, I'm telling you that.
Everybody got, um, a couple times. Yeah, so anyhow.
Oh, it's in last month's.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And so then tonight, we, we were not able to pass this the last two times, because, like I said, Kelly had some corrections that needed to be made. So now we made the corrections, and so now tonight, we need to make a motion to accept this ordinance and pass it.
Alright, so this is again last month's, never again.
You probably didn't got it two months ago. Because initially you got it to read through, and then last time, like I said, Kelly pointed out some mistakes that we need to be correcting. They were corrected, and now...
So basically, we need to do a summation of it, so it's on record.
Right.
And then, uh, we need to have a motion to pass it.
Right, ladies, so you, you wanna make a motion to pass this?
You kind of need to highlight a little bit what it says, so we can do that.
Alright. Anyway, so this is for the rate hike.
No, this is not the rate hike.
Okay, this is, this, we got three little things here about the sewer.
Now, that's the new business, this part is.
Alright, alright, so we wanna make a motion. Do you guys wanna make a motion to where we're not actually charging the two different homes for when you share a pump?
What's more than just that?
I mean, it's that, that's a part of it.
No, so just go to the front page. And basically, what ordinance is saying, we've established this, is so if we can prove that damage is being done by a household.
Is there?
That, um, we have the option of charging them for repairs. And it also, I mean, it includes a little bit more into that ordinance, but we would also have the ability to turn it over to the resident if we had multiple issues of them tearing up the equipment. We could do that. It's not saying that we will, but it's something that we could eventually do. And I believe it's stating, basically, if it's two repairs within a 12-month period of time, then we can charge them for the repairs.
I think Paul pointed out last time that they should be charged, you're going for the first one. And I, I thought maybe two.
I, I think so too. They can be charged for the first one.
So what exactly does it say?
I believe that's probably more of an option clause in there.
Yeah, I know it does say some 12-month period of time, and it wouldn't be January through December. It would be like if it...
Right, but it happened. Yeah, repeatedly, you should need two more times per 12-month period. So instead of town may at full discretion. So it's kind of up to the council, but this just gives us the option to do that.
Alright, so we can do it the first time or second time for sure, like this is...
Right, right.
Unless that's in the town board to actually decide.
This basically just gives us leeway that we can legally charge somebody for repairs if they put something down the sewer that doesn't belong, and we can trace it back to them.
And the way I take it, it also gives us the ability, after the second time, any 12-month period, that we can actually turn it over to the homeowner, right?
We can, we can.
Yeah, 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 we don't want to do it, but we got the option longer.
Well, it would be a little bit of, I mean, when you said, you know, holding it, you know, overwhelmed, that, you know, look, if you keep putting stuff down, the drainage shouldn't be going. This could happen.
Yeah, it needs to be stopped.
May I ask a question for you, Paul?
Yeah, just so I don't lose track.
How many of these pumps are there in town?
Uh, there's fourteen that the town is responsible for, and there's another seven that the people are...
Seven that people are responsible for?
Well, it's the ones that are out of town that have been had on, that they're responsible for their own.
Yeah, the, the ones out of town that are responsible. We're fourteen in town.
There's fourteen in town.
Yeah, and when they were put in, they didn't have that same agreement as the people out of town. They, the town was responsible for that, so what this says is that the damages continue. We could turn that over to them, just like the people out of town are responsible for their maintenance, so they would be responsible for everything.
Yeah. I'll make sure I...
I'll catch you up. We had, we had a couple pumps in there.
Yeah, I, I read the notes and stuff, but I didn't come to the meeting. And I didn't, I wouldn't worry there were that many.
He said there's no one that, and they're responsible for theirs.
Just before I forget to ask, the pumping stations I see that have the red light on, if I see a red light on, should I be telling somebody? Because over the years, you know, every now and then you see one on, and I don't know if it's already been taken care of, but...
Normally, normally, if, uh, there's three of us on the board, normally, which you're welcome to do that if you want, you hold town or whatever, or one of those. But normally, if one of us is, you contact Tom pretty quick.
And if you call the office here, Tom's number is listed.
I'm, I'm sorry.
If you call the office and nobody's here, it gives his number to call.
Okay, well, I thought, just to catch you in front of your microphone, or... Every now and then, you see one on, and whatever.
I've done a couple where I must have taken care of, or...
I've done a couple where I went to check them, and it's, yeah, it's been running for a couple days, and what to do, is what I mean, yeah, and that's where more...
Yeah, and then it hurts to call. It's better to call than to be safe than... Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, from Colonel, anybody? With what we just explained.
I make a motion that we, um, establish the sewer regulations. One second.
That's it.
We gotta take a vote.
Yep. Let me vote for it.
Aye.
Aye. And then you need to sign if they were opposed, by your name.
Now, the new business is corporate storm drains. Scott, I called Scott, and he said he had it to us by our, uh, our April minutes. He said, yeah, he's got it figured out, and there's one, he's completely rebuilt, two of these partially rebuilt. And that's still the old brick stuff. So what, what that means is that he's got to, or dig it out and put a new basin for us.
Yeah, a whole change.
Yeah, that'd be the best way to do it. So I'll get that, and I'll have that by next month.
Okay.
Okay. The video recording, uh, let me see if I can...
But when you...
I already told you I have, yeah, I'll talk about that one. The keys to the office. And I was, uh, I came in the other day, signed some papers. I seen a paper on the desk in there, and it had one of the old ordinance on it about taking the keys away to where I wanted the president and the, and, uh, court treasurer's got the key. I know we got a motion on that.
Well, May, um, May 2023 minutes.
Yeah.
There was a motion passed, and it was voted on, and, um... And I know Kelly, so that she has booked with the attorney, and he said that most generally, not all council members have keys to the office. Just like the court treasurer and one of the person.
Anthony.
Well, yeah, Tom, because he has to bring them to us.
He's the one you don't watch.
Okay, so we got a motion on that, I know it's, we've not been doing it that way. So it's, myself, I'd like to take the list until next month.
How about brings them?
Just to do it.
Well, I mean, it's pretty clear. Well, if we, well, and if we decided we didn't want to do that, all we have to do is
Exactly.
Say we have to do that. I never pushed the issue because, for one, I mean, the locks were changed at the beginning of last year, everybody had a key, nobody seemed to have a problem with it. So I, I didn't push it because I just didn't push it.
Okay. Yeah, it's, you know, on table until next month, and then I would actually make a motion on changing that to where we all keep our keys. And we actually put locks in your drawers in there.
What drawers?
In your, on your cabinet, where you keep your stuff.
Well, I'm not a cabinet, that's a lock, that lock.
Okay, does that have to
I guess what is the reason for other people having keys?
Well, you stuck on it, right? To do things or not?
No, I don't, well, since Lian is taking over generally, I was never over here unless she was here. I mean, I don't have any reason to be in there.
I just think that's protocol, you know, like I said, most offices don't.
No, I mean, that's, like, the lawyer did say that, that, you know, Huntington, nobody has the key except for the clerk. And, you know, I've read stories where the clerk had the key and took everything home with her and locked the office door. And nobody could get a hold of her, and this was in a bigger town somewhere up north. I mean, so that was problematic as well. Where the, everybody was locked out of the office, she had taken computer equipment, was not doing her job, and there was nothing they could do about it. And so I don't know, six to one, half a dozen to the other. But I think as long as the computers locked and for the cabinet where like the checks and things like that are kept locked, I mean, I
That fire cabinet does lock, doesn't it?
Yeah, I do lock that one.
The one that's the checking debit card for the checking account and
Okay, so do you want to make a motion or do you want to table?
Let's, let's let's table it till, I want to make a motion to table it till next month.
Okay.
I mean, you know, things
Take any time to think about it.
I mean, you know, if I'm out, if I'm out, Leonard Kelly's gonna have to sign something, just like it was when Kelly was out, which she was never out, but you know, it's gotta be somebody else who's
Usually when I call, like, when I text Kelly, she'd come right over and sign whatever, so I was still there, but
Okay.
Alright, now, so let's move on now, go away, we actually made a motion table it.
Yeah, we had, we had a motion table.
Alright. Alright, so let's move on to new business against the rate hike proposal ordinance, public hearing.
Yeah, we could run that.
Okay. So, so, again, I'm gonna just kind of skim over it. So I noticed that a public hearing, it was twenty twenty-five dash two, which modified the town Panito existing order, that is existing ordinance. To, for a rate hike, so they want to actually call it to, at a regular town meeting, a town council, for the town of Panito, Indiana, beginning at seven PM on Monday, fourteenth day of April twenty twenty-five, in Panito Town Hall, on five West Washington Street, Panito, Indiana. There will be a public hearing on our regular reading. That's our regular reading nights, there'll also be a public hearing on this. You know, to hear from the town people, whatever. So, see what they think.
From you. Okay, from your side?
Yeah, are you reading the ordinance or the?
I'm ready, I'm reading this one here.
The public notice, okay, that one we don't have to read, is the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, but I also want to let them know about the particular
Right, and we'll need to
They gotta know about the meeting that's gonna happen also, so that's why, that's why I'm reading it.
Okay.
Alright, so, so the public meeting will actually be along, either before reading or after, I mean, the chances are probably before.
Beginning, at the beginning, like I said. But Kelly got a good point too. Kelly, you want to share what you, share with me about it?
Well, I know that Monday was the last number when we had it done at the fire station, how many people were there?
There was a lot.
There was a lot.
Yeah, there was.
And then there was one before that where, is it like a meeting room somewhere in the fire station? We weren't out in the main hall, but there was a meeting before that about rate hikes, and we were in like the back room at the fire station.
Well, it's still, it's still part of the fire station.
It's smaller than this room.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So you think this room is big enough to have public hearing?
Well, it'd be here or get the trucks out, because the meeting room where the kitchen party, it's smaller than this here.
Yeah, so every time we meet down at the fire station, it's actually where the trucks are parked.
They have to take the trucks.
It's actually in the garage.
So the last meeting, was it where the trucks were, or was it in the small?
Trucks. No, the trucks is.
So we had that big event?
But we had, the lady from environmental center speaking.
Someone else was there.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a lot more to it than that.
The engineer.
So you think that's a big venue?
I think this would be fine.
Okay.
We got more chairs to set up.
I don't think we're using this room with that.
Do we need more chairs? Is there more?
There's money in there.
Well, we have it set up for the, I mean, the candidate.
Right, right, alright. And you could even
Alright, so what we're gonna do on this here too, since there is a special meeting, I'm sure you're gonna send something out to the sewer bill, right?
Right, and I need to also send letters to people out of town.
Yep.
So the attorney's gonna tell me exactly what I need to do.
Alright, so that's that one.
Does that have to be published in the paper?
It does.
I think so.
It does. Yes, it does.
So, yeah, and he, like you said, he's gonna send me all that stuff. I'm so thankful for your attorney.
And just for the folks that wouldn't hear, didn't hear, those, those three phases, you know, it's what we need to go, the first phase is raised it up from sixty-five to seventy-two. So a year later, raise it up from seventy-two to seventy-eight, which is a six dollar hike. And then the third phase, in January twenty twenty-seven, raises it from seventy-five, or seventy-eight to eighty-five. So from, it's gonna go from sixty-five to eighty-five in a three-year period. And the reason, again, on the next page here that we're reading, it's, the town actually did, it's the event, which, thank you for that, actually got a hold of it, so you did their, had a rate hike done for us.
Oh, the rate study?
Yeah, the rate study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is right. Alright, so we had a rate study and everything else. And the purpose for this over there is, is, we actually need to actually get back up, we have had a raise in the sewer bill for quite some time now. And to keep everything going with all the old pumps, right now, we're, what are we, twenty-four years old? The pumps, the sewer system?
We went in ninety-five.
Ninety-seven, something like, ninety-seven in operation.
Okay, yeah, it was
Ninety-nine.
So right now, everything's getting old, everything's breaking and busted. You know, it's, and we've had, we've had situations before when, when Steve was on the board, where there was towels and, I mean, a part of a baseball mitt. You know, everything else. You know, so it's, it's starting to cost a bunch of money, no replacement, so we actually, again, that's what the meeting's for, next month. To see, to get everybody's opinion. And I'll read this little one here from the, her ordinance. This is the twenty nineteen dash fourteen dash one. So, council has received an administrative operational and financial need to, of its wastewater systems, including the county's great report prepared by the financial service group. And they actually, they're the ones that actually did the report for us. Am I correct?
Yes. And then this ordinance that you read through tonight, the next month, you will be passing that.
Yes, yes.
That have to be introduced at the first meeting.
Alright, so again, that's why I was hoping a lot more people show up so that we let them know, but Louie has been actually sent out a paper anyway with so with sewer bill, letting know that there's this special meeting. Alright, so now we're going to actually comment and follow. Four more minutes.
Yeah, I don't want to harp on it, but the letter you read at the beginning, that last paragraph, action going to be taken? I mean, it's on the recording, so, I, that seems a little bit like a threat, because I did not break the law. So what action do you plan on taking against me for speaking my opinion?
Yeah, I'll read it again. This is unprofessional and childlike behavior that would not be tolerated like stated before. I would like to see our town board move past this and start working as a team, instead of trying to tear each other apart for the benefit of the town. If we cannot accomplish this as a team, we will have to pursue other avenues to stop lies and discontent from our board members, to keep the board running smoothly. So it's not a threat to no vote.
Well, no, you said further action would be taken, so that wasn't what you had written, you just said that. You did say further action will be taken, and I think, it's my right as a resident and as a councilman, I'm allowed to speak. So, it, what, the whole taking action against me, sounds like a threat.
It wasn't, yeah, just against you. You need to get the board running smoothly.
Hold everybody accountable.
Yeah, that's right, we need to get the board running smoothly, I'm on page.
And you cannot say that's happened over the past year.
I'll say that it has not happened, period.
So, but you wait to call me out specifically when there have been other incidents.
Something untrue was said about me. And I want to make sure I put, I pointed out.
That's fine, but you saying that I sent clips, and I didn't do that.
I don't know who sent clips. But I do, I did, yeah.
But it's everybody's right to do with, that's public record.
Yes, it is.
It does say in the end of code, it can be recorded. So people could do whatever they wanted to do with that recording, and you have no, no leg to stand on or against.
But a board member, but a board member took an oath, and yeah, it doesn't prove.
Uh huh.
That's right.
So, but you wait to call me out on things that have been going wrong, and kept quiet for the rest of the time, which doesn't make a lot of sense, is my point.
My name was never brought up, I mean, there's no reason why my name is brought up this time. As far as me and Linda having something going on, or her hanging on me, that is ludicrous, that is freaking crazy.
And that's not what I said, I said it was unprofessional.
So what's unprofessional?
That your chair was right up against him, and you were
Only from the angle of his camera, that's it.
And I was sitting right here, and I could see too, but
You were sitting in the name.
Having him and having him read.
I watched that video and I did pecking twice with the
As soon as it happened, you look at John, you smile a little bit, you got this shitty ass smirk on your face, it was all covered. So, yes.
And
No, you, you knew that, that's right, it's your right.
Yeah.
It's my right to say something about it.
But it's not your right to tell me you're going to take action against me.
Oh, it did not say against you.
Yeah, that's really what it said.
Well, you can read it any way you want, but it did not say against you.
You hold everybody else to the same standards that you're holding me.
If, if I was brought up into something untrue, I'd have done it before, yes. Yeah, just like you guys would, I would have.
And I attempted and had no backup when I brought things up that were being said that was untrue, everybody sat here, and then I got told everybody in the town was tired of me. So
No, not me, you did.
No, I never said that.
Yeah, you did, it's recorded, you said everybody in this town was tired of me.
Yeah, anybody in the public, any comments?
Can I say something? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna first, if you want to stop.
Did you now, Tom?
Sorry, sorry.
I know, I want to clarify. I had an issue the other day, I don't know if the board has control or any power over any of it, but just in case, I'd like to bring it up here at this meeting. Well, I'll ask everybody here, anybody a dog owner? A what? A dog owner?
Yes.
I am. Yeah, most people are. I pulled a drowning puppy, not dramatic, I'm not dramatizing this at all, out of Larry's pool the other day. And I honestly believe it had to be all been an act of God that I found it, if I wasn't, if I had walked into the water, then the water had ice still on top of it.
Want to hit the cops?
No. I just heard a dog, the sound didn't disturb us. And I thought it was up the way, up the way, so I, somebody will find it, but I couldn't ignore it. And I walked down the edge of the field behind everybody's house, and I realized it was behind me then. I couldn't find the dog. Till I heard this splash.
And you noticed
Breaking the ice, kept trying to get back on top, I couldn't. And it was just, I mean, it was a big puppy, a forty-pound puppy, but it was a puppy. And it would have died in there, but I know it's just from the frigid water. The pool is unsafe.
Well, again, I'm
It's a safe, I'm writing it up because I want to make sure, to the point that this is a safety thing.
If I were to, we could say, I think it's
We wouldn't know.
Isn't it supposed to be some sort of a gate or something that
If I would have that on YouTube, I'd be a hero right now, and there'd be enough war about it, something would get done.
There should be
I don't, I didn't have time for that.
I thought there's supposed to be something that keeps
My hand hurt for thirty minutes after I pulled out that ice water, and it took me a few minutes to get it out.
He came down this lawn, his hand was just
Did you mark out what it was?
Yeah, I do now. The yellow house over here. What if that was a child? Five-year-old boys climb on things, that's what they do. That's, I was the boy. That's what kids do, they go exploring on their own, they get away from their parents. If something happens, do you blame the child, can you blame the parent for not watching it? Blame is not the issue here. The issue here is the danger.
It's pretty obvious that, it's pretty obvious that
How do you get in there, does it happen?
Well, there's, that's on both sides, it's been that way for twenty years.
Okay, so probably
Yeah.
And there's a, kind of a death
Well, the pool is supposed to be covered at all times.
Should we, should we, I'd like to, maybe if you guys can move forward with this, I don't know what's in your power or whatnot, but
I'd like, I'd like to see it gone.
And a lot of
We tried, we tried that three years ago, two years ago.
Many times, he always says he's going to, he never does. Shouldn't be some safety factor, like Vince, you have to have a fenced-in yard to have a pool like that. Something, I don't, I don't know what's best, I don't, I don't get anybody that has a pool that doesn't have a fenced-in yard.
Like the small ones that have the ladders on the side, if it's not used, that ladder cannot sit right. So I would assume he needs to have some sort of gate or something blocking those steps going up.
And more than they must get to it, because that's all that'll happen.
It should be
I've seen it many times in this situation.
Well, I mean, but the underlying point is that it's not being blocked off like it should be, nobody should be able to walk.
Since I've been here for It's our menus since I've been here, they would be, get rid of it. The dog could If I didn't find it within the high-minute thing, oh, I agree, I agree. We just had damn animals floating in the guy's pool, nobody would have ever known. Wanted it to drop.
I got a lot of issues with that dropping.
Yeah, oh, me too, me too. I understand that some of the trash you had picked up from a former meeting, which doesn't do a lot of good to me, because they throw it right on the ground. But they don't burn it, they did away with their trash.
Well, we are, we did
It blows in my ear continuously, I just keep picking it up, throwing it back, but I can barely keep
Okay, I, okay, now, what was, we do got it on our minutes. That, on, we had it on our actual agenda. And Larry was one of them that I didn't get a call. You know, because again, it's I went down there and I actually see, I don't even know what all this guy does. Does he got a bucket?
Ah, yeah, I think so, doesn't he?
See, I think all he does is drink them out and picks up little things. We actually need a big dumpster, bigger than what he's got. Because
He's got a dumpster big enough to hold all that, I think.
Them two behind dumpsters.
Dumpsters, he might have dumpsters big enough to hold them, wouldn't he?
Them two piles?
Yeah, I don't think so. I'm not sure they have.
Cause I'm, I wrote down, he came, I thought I was my stocking.
Alright, I didn't see it down, I'm gonna go
I was there the day that you helped him clean all that up, when you did it for him.
Did I clean it up?
You cleaned it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was
Two years.
I did it three times, I did it three times, I won't have any I did it three times, I did it three times, I won't have it again, I'll go down the hill.
Well.
But I, I think it'd be nice if, uh.
I used to do it.
Maybe we ought to send him a letter, maybe we could send him a letter and may, you know, since.
I don't think letters are gonna do a good job, I think letters go the work of hand.
Well, yeah, actually, I just came a whole, I don't know, eight weeks in one summer.
Last time he came down and told us that he was going to fix it up for his sick wife before she died. Okay, which I knew anyway, that would have happened, yeah.
The pool? He told me he had people coming to get it, I don't know if they were coming to tear it apart, I've heard so many stories, I don't know.
Well, I cleaned it up, because you couldn't hurt a shit, I cleaned it up, and I'll tell you what, you can't walk on, even the deck around it, it's so rotten, that I could have walked one.
No, I was afraid, I was gonna fall through and save the park.
But Steve did call, filed a report with the.
I did file a report.
And they did come out.
At the police department, because go on with my silly story, right after I saved a puppy, I was accosted by a pit bull. I.
Brown?
Light colored, wore a vest that said service dog. And this dog, I had slobber on the back of my legs, he was so close trying to hit me.
So was that, that happened right after you rested?
Right after that, I just find my player.
That, from this house here, the yellow house, that they have a bigger pit bull and they have that little one.
At that point, because I'm in all the.
Well, those two run together.
I'm having confrontation with the pit bull.
So I'm assuming that it's their legal as well.
Yeah, they hook it up together, this one.
Because they're the black.
But I had the back, all the way from the alley into my garage, this dog tree, he from, from me approaching me until I could get a stick, or I had four laying there. Something to keep him off me, and then he ran off, but he was being very aggressive toward me, slaughtering, growling, frothing. I, I spoke to the police, I went to the county police.
And I'm sure the cops told you that if you hadn't been, you'd shoot, you'd shot.
Well, I would have done it though, but if I would have done it when I was still mad, I would have heard too much buzzing. So I waited for the next day, once the police department had done a lot of reporting on the dog.
Did you have that picture?
And you tell them who it was?
On YouTube, or I don't know, wait, hold on, dog, I gotta get you on camera, which today is what you need to do.
I don't think the cause of diseases is going.
See, the cop, the cop told us.
I was more worried about keeping me from getting bitten.
He attacked this older lady down the road here, Diane, no.
It's a different dog, there's different people live there and different dogs.
It's the same dogs.
It's a different one, but it has come up under my windows.
This is a brother or sister to the one that attacked it.
Yeah, but the two boys live down here with Karen.
Yeah.
And the two dogs stays down here.
No, no.
Because she kept it out of her house.
Yeah, not, not here.
Yeah.
It's, it's a different colored.
It's, it's not. Their dog is mean looking, but it's not mean.
But nobody knows that.
I know, wait, what is my dog walk just here?
But, but it does come underneath my windows and barks.
You're talking about the guys right here, right? The yellow house pit bull that said service dog on it. Yeah, it's not.
Well, it.
A dog can be very different in the presence of its owner and other people, but it can't on its own. That dog was highly aggressive toward me, I'm not saying he mean, I love pit bulls.
I've been attacked in the town before by other people, so.
I, I, I would try to turn around and walk away from that dog, and he was going for the back of my legs, growling and trying to bite me, I had a spit all over my leg, he was so close.
Hey, you're supposed to be in your hat.
And this happened, I tried to walk away 10, 12 times between there and my garage, and I finally just had the slowly back up.
The police and the animal, animal shelter paid that house visit again.
Sheriff called me. Well.
It was before.
Sheriff told me carry gun and shoot him. Well. I carry a gun, I don't, only gun that you can shoot a dog.
I've been complaining before.
If I did, we wouldn't be having this.
Okay, she's saying that they were over there this morning.
He was aggressive.
There's a order.
The police and the animal shelter was over there right in early this morning, and I mean, it was somewhere around 7, 7:15. But the dogs did not leave, they're still there, and when the little girls come home from school, they took them outside, they were trying to get them on a chain, but they couldn't, and they shot up again. It was probably 10 minutes before they finally caught up with the pit bull.
I believe that the dogs away from the shelter, it's a different dog.
Yeah.
They may be, they may be more aggressive.
Our dogs will be on the back of the love seat and it will come up right to the window, and it stands off, I mean, where it popped up and the drooling, and will stand there and bark through the window. And I was even afraid I'd open the door and started to step out, and it stayed right there with the growling and barking at my dogs, and I went back in.
Most people don't want to shoot somebody's dog, because dogs do get loose.
My neighbor has a pit bull, he don't like the dog.
They're staying, I tried to say, they're staying in different dogs, but the two dogs that used to be here was down here, and then she told me they were back, I mean, I don't know where them two dogs went. So evidently, and somebody else did move in, right, another, we all did.
Yes, um, yeah.
So, and they got more dogs.
And I think somebody gave him the puppy, they only wanted her, well, I had to give it away, they kept it over my face.
They had to.
When I told him, when I told him that I threw his dog out of the pool and almost died, he just told me, oh, well.
You know, you're not going to get a whole lot of help from the, from Wells County Sheriff Department, unless you got a video, unless you get bit, unless you know who the dog is.
Until someone gets bit, I'm dead.
Exactly, that's my point too, now.
I didn't have time to get my camera out, I was.
Okay, we do got a complaint from, from the town, I mean, we can actually write him a letter and then we tell him to threaten him again.
I told him.
You know, which, which it don't do no good, but we, we're not good at keeping a word anyway, I mean, you know, we need to.
Well, we need to know what we can do.
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't know what's capable of being done.
Right, we need to sing some tea.
I'm gonna go outside and shoot that dog back home, because two of my customers at two different times could not even get out of their car.
Well, then, that dog was under the desk.
And what she said to me was, it jumped out the window, I don't know why you haven't let it go open, but, but then she also, didn't she tell you, or when I'm telling you that the little boy let the window open?
Yeah, yeah, the dogs got out the window, same thing I told you a week before, whatever that.
Well, Shelley was.
Apparently both dogs got out the window, because the puppy, I can only assume the puppy swallowed the pit bull, found the rabbit.
Well, Shelley was saying, her kids, grandkids were scared, got outside, they're, because they just saw a lot of them. So isn't there anything that we can do about that, I mean, well.
The sheriff told me that we're based off of the county's animal thing, basically it's gonna bite you. Or something, you had a video or something, the sheriff literally told me, if the dog is coming at you, you have a legal right to shoot it. He told me, care of mace, you know, whatever, but I'm absolutely not gonna. I am not gonna be threatened by my own government by.
That's what Jeff and he told us.
Of the rest of animals, exactly.
When Watson's dog was.
That couldn't happen.
That if it shows aggression and it's on your property, you have.
Okay, going back to this one.
Yeah, that's my biggest issue.
You said that he said, "Don't mess with it, come tear it down." So.
Two years ago.
Could we send him a nuisance ordinance violation about that pool, make sure that our nuisance ordinance covers it, that there's something in there?
There's nothing in there about saying.
And then you have a pass ordinance, and that could take a lot of time, right?
The what? The safety issue though.
I understand, you'd still have a pass and an ordinance.
Find out what the overall rules are for pools in the county.
Well, it's, it's like my pond, I mean, you know, I put my pond in, there's absolutely nothing for a pond or a swimming pool at the time.
Well, so, so could we then, if I can find that is legal to do that, send him an ordinance, if he doesn't clean it up in 20 days, we hire, like the onage, to come in and tear it down?
Yeah, he's already had it before, I think that's.
That's an abatement, a form of an abatement?
I don't know about that.
Well, it's gotta be in the same 12 months.
We can abate him.
Yeah, it's gotta be in the same.
We hired somebody that going to clean the trash.
But trash is a lot different than a pool tearing it down.
Yeah.
That's probably, trash is just trash, that's actually property, that'd be like if a car was sitting there on your, on his property and everything else, you just tend to go in.
Or tear it down.
I, I will check it out before you go in and do anything like that.
I would attempt to be attorney.
Cover your, cover your.
It's gotta be condemned by a help board or something or something.
If you're building up that Mustang's been there almost 15 years.
Well, see, now, we do, we can, we can call, cops haven't come to tow it away.
They moved it in.
Cops is not a legitimate problem.
I worked on this for 10 years.
But that's disturbing.
Not like a tree in a truck, not like a tree in a truck, your tree in his truck, yeah.
Well, so you're saying.
We just wanted him to go on his property.
Yeah.
But to save the dog a little bit.
But, but if you're saying that the boards around the pool are not safe, the walkway.
The walkway, that hits the ball, but.
Okay, so then there's one part that, like he said to them, condemned, it's not safe, and he doesn't have a gate or something.
My opinion, I'm sure.
Nobody here's ever seen it, it's, it's, it's bad.
It's bad.
I mean, it's so thick, a moss, tree moss.
Down.
You can set a water bottle on it and it won't fall.
I know.
It's, it's been like that every year since I moved in.
I think we ought to get a whole health department and see what.
Well, we did that before, they came out here, but I think it'd be a good idea to do it again, yeah.
Well, yeah, now, since we had this issue with the dog in there, you know.
You got a police report, did they give you a police report on that?
No, I spoke to Quentin.
Here. Quentin, queer.
Rick, Quentin Rier, and he wrote it all down, he said he would file a report. Because I felt if I didn't say something and do everything I can, unless something happens, then I feel.
And let's see if we can get that report and include it with the Department of Health, to see if we can actually, you know, put a little bit more urgency on it.
Yeah, because I mean, just like you said, the little kid wouldn't go there. Yeah, it's a danger.
We got some kids around here that, that wander stuff.
The report I filed was mainly about the pit bull.
Yeah.
It included the other incidents, it was all one thing within five minutes of each other, but.
Yeah. Right, so that's one thing we can do.
It's just simply safety, in my opinion.
Yeah, just.
If it was a child, we would not want to sit here with our heads up.
Right, now, not to cut you short, we need to keep moving, but we, we'll take care of it, right?
Well, the county health department.
Can, can you actually also, can you get a copy of the police report and bring it to the town?
I suppose.
It, uh, because he, it's gonna be your report, right?
Yeah, I, I suppose.
Well, that, that way there, it gives us a little bit of better.
I would have said they gave you a copy, so they might have.
For, they would.
They might give it to you more than they would.
Yeah, I, I never had.
Well, that way there, it's just so that we can actually, you know, tell the.
Well, I'd be happy, I'll be happy.
You know what, we ain't got a police report to where this happened.
Well, they can always get that, probably easier than what they.
Yeah, I would say the health department could certainly request it too.
Yeah.
All right, so another thing I was talking about last month then is Ethan Rummer's place. So he came on and talked to me a few times since the last meeting, but he is in the county, and there's nothing we can actually do about it. It's a, and at one time, it's a, they, they were connected to the sewer, just like everything else. But they actually, while it was actually running down through there, them two places, actually, all they did was actually pay the hookup fee, they didn't have to do the $1,500 and, you know, like walking trucks now. It was just same fee everyone else had to do, so that's why they hooked up. So there's, so they're still, they're still county, and nothing's been annexed or nothing like that, you know, so, and I'll tell, I haven't called Doug yet, but I will. And letting Doug know, because Doug is, again, he's still.
Yeah, he was in again the other day, I wonder if we got anything done.
Well, I did talk to Ethan, if you notice today, he's cleaning up. I told him, I said, it's, it's, you promised me that this thing would be the best looking yard in town, and that's what he told me. It is so bad.
He heard that before.
Then they got stuck, they, they actually drove across the road, over to my yard and turned around, because they couldn't, they couldn't get traction. So, so that's the thing with them, so, again, with Ethan, I mean, if somebody wanted to call because they didn't like the mess or whatever else, they'd have to call Gary Pennyworth, you know, and get the county on him. But he did tell me before I came down here that he actually cleaned it up, so all the tires is going away this, by this weekend, you know, so it's taken him somewhere, having to thread it. You know, and, I mean, he was pretty cool about it, I said, as long as you just keep doing it, buddy, I mean, you know, you surely, you want to clean it up and keep it cleaned up, chances are you're gonna be good. I mean, nobody's gonna call on you, nobody's gonna harass you, nobody's gonna say something, say nothing. You know, so hopefully that's the way it goes. And then with Cole's rocks, I talked to him again, and he's gonna move him, you know, it's a... It's a, I took him out there, showed him what the sidewalk was, and I actually gave him this tape that they play. You know, but anyway, it's a... And I told him where, where I thought he should put it, if he wants to move it somewhere, and as far as the fiber optic box, the fiber optic box, it's so far off, there is nobody ever hit it, nobody ever rode over it unless it was a track. You know, it got over that bar. You know, so it's not a problem, but the rocks is the problem, and that he's gonna get it moved, he said that everything's thawed out now, he'd get a strip, a bucket over here, and get it moved. And I tried to convince him, like, dude, it's gonna take me five minutes to come down here and move it.
He does realize that there's also a right away from the edge of the road on Meridian Inn on his property so much.
Well, where I have him to move it to, where I showed him to, is on the backside of the sidewalk. Which is still a sidewalk there, it's just busted up and it's grass covered.
Yeah, I mean, there are buses and everything, they run over our corner and it's all muddy and everything else up to the.
You know, so the rocks has gotta be here, so I expressed my opinion and told him, again, that it's gonna cost you a lot of money if somebody tears up your vehicle. I mean, if I, if I go through there and mess up one of my vehicles, I know he's gonna pay for it. I'm 100%. You know, so, but he's gonna, he's gonna go ahead and get it moved. So I thought last month, actually, when he said he's gonna get it moved, I asked, I told him, it needs to, they'd be done pretty quick, I mean, I thought they'd be done by now. But it was just, I talked to him again on Sunday, and he seemed like, he was pretty cool about it. I guess he had some doubt, his barn door, something froze, and it probably was, it's been cold, you know, nasty, so you can't live like them, I guess. So I told him that'd be fine. Then, whatever, I told you guys about that, and Ethan's, and, uh... The video recorder, let me tell you, I called, I called that, what's that name?
Styles.
Styles.
That's one of the other, that you see.
Okay, so I, now, where's, what do they do?
They do, they do all kind of audio stuff, you know, they're right across from the, the home store.
Okay.
Farm store.
So I'll go ahead and call him, and there's literally nobody else around, blocking that does it. You know, that.
What about the ITT, they are the ones that we save our information in the cloud? I wouldn't have minded that.
Where are they at?
I'm not sure where they're at, but I can get to their address.
So they're a daycare, concept, all that kind of stuff too.
Yeah, probably gonna have to come and pour it.
Yeah. So, all right, so I'll get, Dr. Kyle's hand, yeah, can you get that and daycare? She was still, get somebody over here. And I did actually look at the first again, the filter's good, I came out earlier today, the filter's good, fronting good, everything sounds good. But twice I've been here, I still heard that, you never heard that vibration in the bathroom? When that kicks on? Yeah, with the door open, we sit here, it's really loud. So I'll get up there, I'll get up there, hopefully before next meeting, and there's gotta be a duct system loose, because it's suddenly vibrating and vibrating really loud.
Are you gonna do the lights?
Yeah.
Because the back, the back of the light is really.
And then off, well, we don't need to approve that, because we already got it approved.
Yeah, that's approved about a year ago, yeah.
I was waiting for the door, so trying to.
Oh.
You know, these are E D L lights, you know, I got these on self, they're like 48 or something like that. So they have them in. All right, so it's, uh, any more comments from the public?
One thing I would, I would just like to publicly thank Kelly, because when we had snow and stuff on the sidewalk, she would shovel the walk, sprinkle the salt.
I used to do that.
I appreciate her doing that, so thank you, Kelly.
I used to come down and do it.
I do have a question, am I already gonna be any more minutes that, if you could clarify, is there metal? Tires that are not on the ground that are sitting out? Is that coming?
We do got an ordinance, yeah.
I just announced the ordinance, that's named in there.
Okay, and how long are they allowed to sit out before they're violating the law?
Well, until, until we get, until we get a complaint.
Okay, all right, here we go. Okay, all right, here we go. And there's four in Larry's house, and then there's this old fall. There are new tires.
Yeah, by the way.
And they just, all out there, they're the only, they're not on the ground, there's gonna be mosquito heaven, is my issue.
Him or me?
Kathy has a couple right next to my, right-
Again, I went down there twice, he was too sick, he couldn't talk. So, in the last two weeks, cause I wanted to tell him about-
But I'm, I was gonna, this brought to Kathy's attention that she'll do something about it, yeah, she's, I don't know, be tiring, but-
Who's Kathy?
Randy.
Kathy.
Well, we are gonna confirm somebody go down there and clean it up, we already made an approval, said voted on, somebody, and we're gonna pay to have somebody clean it up. But when we say clean it up, they're gonna, they gotta bring the bucket in, the two piles are gonna be gone, with the one pile is over going. So, that's when beside that, from that tree-
Yeah.
That does about a foot of it, it's over on the-
On-
Reader's, well, Reader's old-
Yeah, it's a property, yeah, it's on their property, part of them.
You know, so, I mean, that cleaned up, I mean, this pile cleaned up, and was that the only ordinance it was, or was it, it was a tall weeds and everything, right?
Tall weeds and trash, that's what this new ordinance is like, so.
All right, so, what we're gonna do, I'll get somebody, I already got tons of pictures, I'll show them, that this is what I mean. You know, so, now, make sure that they know that they're contacting me also.
Loose trash on the ground becomes my problem.
Yeah.
There's hundreds of thirty-two ounce trucks just all over the ground, just strewn everywhere, and I pick them up each day, it's like- I think if it was next to anybody else's property, they'd feel strongly about it just like I do.
Well-
I'm the one that has to deal with it all the time.
How you repay the money?
It never ends.
It's, we actually, what we did, that, I think, what was it, a hundred bucks?
Hundred and seventy-five.
All right, and what, what you doing on that, and there, you actually turned it over to the town, to Lucky, right?
Walton.
What, what you do with it?
I sent Larry a bill because that's what we paid to have it cleaned up. And I said, "You have thirty days to pay this." He didn't pay it, so today I filed a link.
Yeah, and, and when you do it this way here-
It'll go to his property.
Yeah, it goes to his property tax, it goes to the blow-
I wonder how you, cause you, you do that, they aren't gonna pay it.
Right.
But you gotta do it somehow.
Well, you gotta, you gotta follow the right procedures to get them paid, and you gotta send it to Bluffton if you don't pay, so they put on the property tax.
We had attempted to find him.
I also have a question about what was uncovered for the ground.
But we-
Is the party attorney covering it, any of your ordinances?
Take him to court to get that money.
It is?
So, we did that.
It's that-
And if they're not contained in the ground, is it gonna be a barrel?
Abated.
Well-
Is it contained?
I think the company did, that ordinance say the trash burning should be in a barrel.
It's, it's gotta be contained.
But, I mean, when you have brush, I mean-
Without rereading, I don't really know. Do I have to copy the-
I don't know, say it is, but I-
Yeah, I agree. It, it, I'm not sure, but it's not, I'd like to bring up the fact that we shouldn't talk, or you should talk amongst yourselves, I don't know what you can do about changing that ordinance to that.
Do you wanna copy the ordinance that we have?
Yeah, the burn is trash, I can't remember when, it just goes on the ground and bags, animals come over and rip it open.
Hey, I can't even-
If you put it here, it just adds new after, it's a conti- Okay, if you take it out there and you light it off by a rear end, it's a burn pile. If you take it out there and leave it for six months and let it grow, and then eventually get around burning it, it's a trash pile. It's only a burn pile the day you burn it. And the time the one is having to deal with this all the time, and tires picking up garbage out of the yard, it kind of wind blows, it is horrible.
So, Roy, in the payoff, it's everybody's own choice to have trash picked up?
Yes, it's not me anymore.
He's got trash picked up.
No, he was, he canceled it.
He's got the barrels down there, did they come and get him?
His cans went away.
Okay, they came and got him. Yeah, that was last time I did-
I used to pick it up and put it in his cans. Cause he threw it on the ground right next to-
I seen it.
The burn pile, the can would be empty, he'd never take it off to get in it.
I seen it.
When recove-
I went to deliver shovels and-
You know, gave us notice.
Eight times last year, in here, Bill, I filled his cans to the brim.
I was about getting, you know, the whole town to-
Everybody.
I know, I know.
Every time Kathy's complaining.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think a lot of people in town knows how bad it is down there.
The town-
Or if they pay attention.
Well, they know, I have to, I, I, again, I know what this is blowing, and you guys, for anyone, anybody's right here, continuous like it does blowing.
You know, some of them-
They feel strongly about it, that's how you do it, but it's easy to just, it doesn't affect me, get put on the back burner. That's my property values.
We actually, we actually-
You're aware of it all.
It's, correct? What, what are we writing down, what we gonna do about Larry?
I'm gonna call it, I don't know.
Okay, gonna call the health department.
Yeah. No need to write another.
Okay, we'll call the health department and look for them there.
Pick his mail up.
All right, so, and again, we're still under the same warrant comment, we're still under the same motion to actually get it cleaned up, as soon as I hit somebody clean it up. You know, and hopefully, hopefully this guy will. You know, hopefully he's got a bucket.
Well, if it is cleaned up, from my experience, the very next day, it goes right back on the ground.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Well, okay, why-
Yeah, the next day, I mean, I, I watch him, I watch him get out of the vehicle and just throw the stuff, I realize they're all away.
I've seen it.
I think you can't control that.
They're calling the health department, I would ask about that as well. Correct. About trash being thrown on the ground.
On the ground.
Mm-hmm.
The commonest way, there's constantly cats and stuff.
There are three, two inch pots, and they're all over the place. I mean, they're getting pointed with a blow on, on Meridian, they're down.
Oh, yeah. Oh, they're all over the field, they're constantly, you know, it happens.
All right, well, you got that taken care of.
I hate to show up one meeting and two dozen complaints. But it does need to rest.
There's a good complaint that needs to be said.
Yeah.
You had your scrubs, you have the scrubs in, and a decent parts, send it back in, probably six weeks, or one tenth of parts, is it? I'd like to get the blow service stood, it's time to get them done.
Well, you're, you're the man, I mean, you know, you tell us what you need done.
Any chance we can get a load to the stomach?
Well, if we need it, we gotta do it.
Um, the drive going back on the ditch back, back to the meter, it's getting kind of bad again.
Now, is it, is it, is it due to, I was, I'm gonna say their name, Baldurs and the people from up there, is it due to their foreowners?
It's probably just the-
It's just, it's just maintenance of the town. I seen them going back there, no, when I come over last night.
Okay.
They were going back there.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that's maintenance of the town.
I seen them going back there, no, when I come over last night.
Okay.
They were going back there.
I'd say that's upkeep and maintenance for the town. Where are you legislating?
Yeah, I'd be, maybe put it in.
Like, at least get one load there for the, for the meter and ditch back there, give a load over, you know, around the circle, right, for others, too. Put at least one there, maybe, where we might put it, one would be great, two would be better.
And I also wonder, maybe, if somebody needs to look at that alley between Shorgans and Morgans, that's mud. And there's some gravel down in there.
Well, if you remember, we actually told him we was going to, remember, we was gonna do it. And I, 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 I'm along with you, too, I agree with you.
He said he, he would maintain it.
And they both them together in here said that they both maintain it and we wouldn't mess with it. But they ain't, but they ain't maintaining that, yes, we need to-
He went and scraped it with rounder, from what they said, and it is down to just mud. So, even if we had media com or the power company needed through there for some reason, they're gonna get stuck and it's gonna get ratted.
Would the fire be hard when they were need to?
Well, that's true, too.
Right, who would you get to bring the load to stomach back there? Do you got somebody that does that for you already?
Oh, there's two, right around there.
All right.
Right around here.
If somebody want, that's a hundred and fifty.
No, you're the man. I mean, you're, our maintenance and our fix number yet, so you- And again, this is maintenance and upkeep, they actually don't need to be approved again, you know, then wait until next week.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, that's good to know, yes.
I'm gonna go spend four, five hundred bucks. Well, it's a bill for it.
I'm calling it, yes.
Yeah, well, you'll call me next.
Well, you always call them once and then, so that's, that's good, yeah, yeah, all right, I agree with you.
So, are we bringing three loads of stone, like, two for him and one for the alley between, or what are we approving?
Well, okay, the alley will probably need to approve that, with Tom's maintenance here, down there, with the alley, I mean, you know, it's, we'd probably have to have, either have Tom supervisor or have, or call many again, have him do it. You know, and just grade it and put a couple, you know, power must only need sections.
So, two loads of stone for Tom?
Yeah, I don't, I haven't seen it, is anything you can take off of it?
That I don't know, I'll have to go down and check, too.
So, maybe that will be tangled in the menu.
Yeah.
Can't, I can do it all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
How many, what's the stone you need? Couple?
You said a couple, but let's see how far that goes.
Well, Doug's seriously thinking about going ahead and seeing if, he wanted to put a gate up there, but he's gonna come to that meeting and talk to the town first, cause since, the town's gonna have access back there. They'd like to put a gate up, you know, can't do it in front of them, and give you guys a key, they, you know, give us a key to get back in there, go back behind it, to keep my whole building. All right, we, we-
Back where?
For his pills.
Yeah, but where do you want to put, where do you want to put it? He's got a plan for it.
Yeah, well, if you can't put it up front, you know, and, and give us keys to it, so we can get in there, too.
Mm-hmm.
He wants to put it behind it.
You want to get it set in the tracks?
No. He wants to put it behind the station back there, behind the fence.
See, the last time, didn't you wanna put it like between the crib and the station that there?
Yeah.
And we said, "Well, what does that have to do, they're just gonna go down the ground."
I didn't, I didn't understand what you're talking about now.
Well, some, some now, he wants to try to block it off, or go back here and even see how he-
We're back, um-
The, the best way for him to do it, would actually do it right up front.
He's going, wants to go back, what's he gonna, what's he gonna need back there?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's up front, it's up front, if you can't do it up front somewhere, after, after crossing tracks-
I don't see any way to stop it.
If you go, well, there's no stopping. For the foreowners, it's the big trucks.
The-
Cause right now, like you made me, five different people, that goes back with their trucks, three different Jeeps and a Samurai.
The Samurai is at the foreman.
Yep.
It went, yeah, last-
Just tearing the shit out of everything.
It went just over the tracks, just barely turned, it went down the side ditch of the tracks, just last night, and then went down the ditch.
Okay, that's in, that's in his granddaughter's son.
Yeah.
That, that Doug flung your pot.
I mean, and it wasn't, I don't care, it wasn't, I understand what Doug's after, but I don't, I just honestly don't see how it's gonna walk off.
I think that's why when he brought it up before, you know, he said, "They're, they're gonna get through here."
I mean, if they can-
He can't put a gate across that.
I watched it, they turned, he just barely got over the tracks and turned, went down the side ditch of the tracks and went down, went down the ditch and-
Hang on. That's, that's a felony, that, that's railroad, right?
How, how are you gonna stop that, you know? I mean, the railroad ain't gonna let you put it down there.
All right, so what we do, we go down and look at it, so maybe have, I can call many again, maybe see if he can give us a quote on that alley, you know, what it take to scrape it and, and put stone down. I mean, he's supposed to be getting ahold of me anyway, so.
Well, I, we'll do that and tell them we're gonna get a couple out there at the same time. We'll have it this week.
You don't have to have it this week?
Yeah, no, I mean, if, if he can get there next week, there he could.
Take two stone, take two back there? He don't like going back there. And again, I'm down top today, but what are you doing? Because he, 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 who, Dave actually ran a wall, Dave Walsh. He went back there and he was, he was dumping what he pumped out a little bit right there, in that open area right there.
Mm-hmm.
Which I told him, yeah, we're not gonna dump it. And evidently, Dave didn't like it. So, he said he just loaded up and took it to Bluffton, dumped it. And maybe that's a good idea, you know, so. Dave, Dave's changed now, Dave's a good guy again, so, it's, I think, Dave's always good.
There's places out there, and there are areas that, that wetlands, off the side of it, so, we have to do it again.
Exactly. And well, I tell him, you need two stone and two truckloads down there, and he can give us an estimate on what he thinks we need here, don't need them done now, within the next couple weeks.
Well, if he's gonna do this in the next year, too, we'll do it same time.
All right.
If he can't do this for a long time, then if he doesn't wanna do this, if he doesn't wanna go back there, I don't-
Well, he'd go back there.
I don't prefer you guys to get to it.
All right.
Probably still forgive somebody, and I don't want you to have no problem with it, so.
Exactly. Any more comments from the public? All right, the approval of the checks?